Want to lead this?
I want to lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off, take a roll. Rick Robertson.
Here.
Michael Jansma.
Here.
Mike Rossmo.
Here.
Wayne Ferris is here.
Here.
And if anybody had a chance to look over the agenda, we get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Rick Robertson, supported by Michael Jansma. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Passes five.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted for the November 10, 22 regular meeting. Second.
Motion by Rick Robertson, seconded by Mike Rossmo to approve the minutes from the November 10 meeting. All in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Passes five to zero. This time, we'd like to go ahead and entertain public comments. Is there any public comments this evening? Okay, at this time. Communications, does anybody have any communications that they wish to present?
I have nothing.
No.
Wayne, we had, we did get a notice from the city of Fremont, excuse me, that they just adopted their new master plan.
Okay.
And so they know, and a economic development plan, which was also shared with Denver Township and Brooks Township.
Are we gonna have any insight to that?
No, they didn't. They didn't provide anything. You can go on the, I guess, the city of Fremont website and view it.
I'd say it would be interesting to try to keep in line with which direction they're headed and keep our focus in that same direction also. Alright, thanks Steve. Line seven, there's new business. Do we have any new business?
Old business.
Oh, I'm sorry, the old business? Yes. I don't think, do we have any old business that needs to be handled this time?
Do you not believe so?
What's that?
I don't think we have any old business.
No, I don't know, we're just getting the
Yes, that's gonna be down here on the
The proposals, but them are here, it's gonna be handled.
The bits for the master plan.
Yep. There's nothing pending.
Well, I guess we go on to the new business. We are at this point where we need to go for reelection of officers.
I nominate Michael Jansma for president. Support.
Rick Robertson has supported a motion by Mike Rossmo for Michael Jansma to be Have we got a
President?
President, how do we call it, president?
Chairperson.
Chairperson.
President. Chairperson.
Okay.
All in, do we wanna do a, do we wanna do a roll call now, or are you just going?
Yeah, it's being rolled, or whatever.
Let's just do a regular, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or the same. Passes five to zero.
Mary Martin, I mean, motion to Mary Martin for Mary Hoskins for trade secretary. Support.
Motion by Mike Rossmo, supported by Rick Robertson for Mary, which one do you want?
Hopkins.
Hopkins. Be secretary, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. I don't believe there's any other, what other do we have to?
That's it.
Just the chairperson and the
Vice chair.
Or vice chair?
Well, we only need a vice chair for that seven people. Yes.
Still had to handle succession, in case your chair can't make it, who will run the vice chair that will run again? So if you still have four, you still have four, actually three, you have four.
Can the secretary, being the next officer, do you have to have one specific for that, or? Can we do that by motion, or?
We could do that.
Well, with the township meetings, say like in November, I miss, then I don't see, so then Nancy just appoints, usually Rick, Jake, my brother. So it's up to you.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, you'll do that.
I'll do it.
Yeah, it's the secretary meeting vice chair office. I'll do that.
Yep.
Yep.
But this time, we're going to get into bids for the master plan. I think I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Steve on this portion of it. He's been basically the head on new contact and representing these individuals.
We are required by law, as every other township, to have a master plan for the development and zoning of the township. It's not an optional thing. It has to be updated every five years under the Michigan zoning enable act. For, the last time, I think we did a real rewrite with input that, going through all the different areas of the master plan, I believe it was 2008, when we brought it. So that's 15 years ago, and obviously, there's been a lot of changes in 15 years. What we've been doing for the past several cycles of that is just having the numbers updated. So in other words, the amount of acreage and farm and that sort of thing. Age distribution, population data. But we really haven't done a actual revision of the master plan. You know, where you have goals and vision, where you wanna go to. The importance of the master plan is that, at least in theory, your master plan informs your zoning ordinance. So long the short of it is, over the last year or two, we found that we really need to work on our zoning ordinance. So doing that without doing master plans is kind of like putting the cart before the horse. So our first step is that we wanted to do the master plan and do it properly. Getting public input, getting board and planning commission input, updating the land usage, the whole shot. And then putting that together, have a good, solid master plan, and that we can get behind. And then from there, being able to go on to rewriting our zoning ordinance. So we sent out, back in October, request for proposals, RFP, as folks call it, to planning consultancies for this process. We basically, we wanted to have it where they not only gathered all the socioeconomic data, land use data and all that, but also to get board input, planning commission input, most importantly, citizen input, both online and also through in-person meetings, very well, like town hall meetings, whatever you wanna call it. So we sent those out, we didn't get a response from everyone, but we did get two letters who responded. We have Rowan, and I'm not gonna butcher your last name.
Frank.
From BRI. They've actually, I believe they worked on Fremont's
Yes.
Plan. And we have Jeff
From McKenna.
From McKenna Associates. And they've also done a lot of work in townships in the area here, and are very familiar with what we've done. Obviously, there have been some major changes over the last few years, and controversies et cetera. They've done some preliminary background work on where we're at, they put together their proposals, and they're here to present to our planning commission and to the public what they're offering to do and the cost, and I guess we'll start out. Well, Rowan, you got here first, so you get to go first. And Rowan again, it's from BRI.
Thank you, Steve. As Steve mentioned, my name is Rowan Brady, I'm a planner with Beckett and Raider. I'm based out of our Grand Rapids office, Beckett and Raider has four offices now, Grand Rapids location, Traverse City, Ann Arbor, Petoskey. So we pretty much cover everything from the top of the Kiwanau Peninsula to down to Metro Detroit. So we have a lot of experience all over the state, but we really enjoy working in smaller communities. Our bread and butter are rural townships, smaller communities. As Steve mentioned, we just finished working with the city of Fremont, Charred and Charter Township and Dayton Township on their master plan update. They have a joint planning commission, as I'm sure you're aware, so their master plan was an effort between all three of those municipalities, really focusing on citizen input and providing a clear direction for the future. I know you have expressed interest already tonight, I'm looking at the direction of that plan moving forward. And they're just telling you on some highlights of that plan. The city of Fremont is really focusing on bringing a lot of retail and accommodation into their downtown, continuing to support that business. And so, we're well positioned to write a plan and zoning ordinance aligned with the regional goals, as well as a major population center where they boast to you at this township. And we would be well equipped to do a master plan and a zoning ordinance update, really in lockstep with those projects as well. I'm Beckett and Raider, has been working in the state of Michigan for over 55 years. John Echo Angely, who's our principal at the firm, his resume should be in the proposal. He's been working in consulting for 30, 40, you know, probably better than I do how long John's been working. I've been at the firm for about four and a half years. And then Sarah Coquibea, who's our other staff member around the project, has been working in local government for about 20 years. And she recently joined Beckett and Raider a couple of years ago, and she has a wealth of zoning experience. And so I'll be the face-to-face, coming to all the meetings, doing a lot of the work, but we work as a team. So John and Sarah will definitely be contributing as well, but I'll be the face you see coming to meetings, doing a lot of the community engagement. I think this is the most people I've ever seen at a rural township planning commission, which really bodes well for your community engagement, that you have a lot of people out here already, so we'll do the same for
Rowan, this is like.
Yeah, yeah, so really engaging the community in this process. As Steve mentioned, if 2008 was your last substantive update, it's really time to get into the details and really fully engage the community on how they see the direction of the township. We've proposed two main community engagement strategies, an online survey and then an open house content. We generally like to do the survey first, hitting on broad overall themes, and then the themes emerging from the survey are what we like to hit in the open house. So while the survey is designed to be pretty broad, we'll kind of get into the weeds and then the details in the open house, where we can have a little bit more informal conversations with residents. Whatever's emerging from the survey is generally what we design the open house around. And as Steve mentioned, this process is really, kind of, these processes really go hand in hand. You do a master plan update and a zoning ordinance update. We have a lot of experience with rural zoning, township zoning. We worked with Dayton Township and Charred and Charter Township to evaluate their zoning ordinances and provide directions for the future development of those ordinances. They have, their zoning administrator does zoning work for both of those townships, so we work really closely with him and providing a clear direction for the future of those zoning ordinances when they come up for review. I do wanna open it up and see if there were any questions about the proposal, about Beckett and Raider, about myself. I'd be happy to answer to any of those, or if you would like me to go into a little bit more detail on the process, I'm happy to do that as well.
Do you have any timeframe?
So generally, we're looking at about a year for the master plan, and then eight to 10 months for a zoning ordinance, so you're looking maybe around 20 months to two years. That can be, that is flexible, that's kind of just the general process. So if you're looking at moving a little bit quicker, or if you would like to take a little bit more time in between a zoning ordinance and a master plan, you can certainly be flexible there, but that's a standard timeline for a master plan zoning ordinance update. And of course, a lot of it is dependent on how regularly the steering committee meets for this project. You'll see in our proposal that we proposed a steering committee for the master plan to guide that plan's development, and then also one for the zoning ordinance. So obviously, how we schedule those meetings will heavily influence the schedule of the project.
What are we looking at with the community survey?
Yeah, so an online survey will generally be drafted in consultation with the steering committee. We'll look at the old master plan, try to pull out common themes there. And then Steve has mentioned, some controversies or critical issues that have come up in the last 15 years. We'll definitely wanna cover those in the online survey as well. In terms of distribution, there's a couple ways you can go around distributing an online survey. Kind of, you're bare bones, posted online in the newspaper, or you can go all the way to the other end where you're sending flyers to each property owner, or I don't imagine you have utilities in the community, maybe close to the village. But generally, you send it to the existing rural people who are paying taxes, will get a flyer with a link to the online survey. And then we always encourage hard copies that are available at the township offices. So people who either don't have an internet connection, or who are, just would rather take a paper survey, have that option as well. And those can be returned to us, and we'll incorporate those in the results.
I wanted to go both, hard copy and online.
Yeah.
I wanna try to reach as many as we possibly can.
And that's really, and that really comes down to how you advertise the survey as well. And so, if there's a local newspaper that has really good readership, definitely work with them to get it posting in the paper. If there are established communication channels, I heard Steve mention Facebook, definitely post it on social media, if there's a strong readership there. And then also leveraging a lot of institutions that have strong community connections, so religious organizations. We found a lot of success working with those, getting surveys distributed, alliance clubs, community organizations. And then through the school system as well, we've had really good success working with local schools on getting surveys distributed. And we actually did that in Fremont, we worked with the Fremont High School, got surveys with the kids, and then home to the families.
On the open house itself, we would, you're looking at a one event open house?
Yeah, that's certainly flexible. We could do, adjust the proposal to add more or less. Definitely not less, we would definitely wanna do one or more, but we can certainly be flexible there if you're interested in doing more.
The reasoning behind that is we're looking at trying to make sure we cover individuals who are working on a second shift, or, you know, other than a day shift, that can make, I wanna make sure we can get those personnel in here also. So I would like to see that adjusted and added to the proposal.
Certainly. And what we often do with open house is we have an opportunity for those who maybe aren't able to participate to still engage with the topic, and that might be a survey or a questionnaire that covers the open house topics, that is able to be taken for one week, two weeks after the open house. So, you know, if there was just kind of a random event, maybe your car broke down, you hit a deer, and you weren't able to come to the open house, you're certainly able to still provide feedback.
What's the format of these open houses? How do they, versus the surveys, I guess? Because if you can get the same information from a survey, what's different about the open house?
Yeah, it's a great question. So our open house is really an opportunity to provide a little bit more context, a little bit more background information. Maybe provide a clearer picture of a, of an issue or a topic, especially, you know, just kind of the, I'll bring up solar, renewable energy. That's a topic we've been dealing a lot with in rural communities. Providing a lot of background information on what that topic looks like, going over resources. It's generally pretty hard to do in a survey, because your surveys, you want to be designed to be as readable as possible and as easy to take as possible. So you have to balance the amount of information provided versus the information you're trying to gather. Our open house is an opportunity to provide a little bit more of that background information and a little bit more context. And so, in Fremont, our open house was structured where we asked some questions about housing preference in the survey. So would you like to live in a duplex? What kind of house, you know, what kind of single-family home are you looking to live in? And then in the open house, we actually had some photos of those housing types and asked, you know, what do you like about this? What do you not like about this? Would you ever consider living? And so that's kind of an example, if we ask a high-level question about one subject, and then the open house provide more detail and get more detailed responses. So that answer your question?
Absolutely.
My, one concern that we had in wanting to have in-person feedback is that having an online survey, it's very easy to have issues with, I'll just call them keyboard warriors.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, where, you know, on the internet, no one knows I'm a dog.
Right, yeah, I get that.
And whereas in person, people tended to be a little more serious. And so we thought that
A little more down-to-earth.
Yeah, I mean, you still wanna have the online presence, clearly. But having that balance, you know, was something early on in the project, to design the open house, that we wanted.
To Steve's point as well, we often see open house opportunities as educational opportunities as well. And so, you know, I would say your general public doesn't know the kind of how the master plan zoning ordinance development approval works altogether. And so we like to take that opportunity to provide that educational component as well, to make sure that the feedback that we're getting is not only what the public is intending to provide, but is useful feedback as well. Again, that's another challenging thing to do in a survey, is how do you explain to someone what zoning is in a survey? Who might not be familiar with zoning, but in the open house, we can have a conversation, maybe have some materials available.
I have a question. Um, do you look at the open house as the direction you're going with your master plan and what you want? Do developers look, is this a key for them to get in motion for maybe, say, some kind of housing? Will then developers look into these master plans and come to the open houses? And then are able to have a little bit of idea if they, if they want to jump in and, and come in in those areas that are important, that you're updating in the master plan?
I would, I wouldn't say developers are the target audience for an open house. They're obviously more than welcome to come, especially if they're very active in the community. We would want them at the table providing their input. We generally try to engage those folks during a zoning ordinance update, or during kind of the implementation section of the master plan, to ensure that kind of the translation from community feedback to actual steps and goals is aligned with what they're looking for and what they're needing. Generally, the open house is an early step in that process, really targeting the community's feedback. We wanna ensure that the community has the first voice and loudest voice in the direction of the master plan as well.
Thank you.
How long are you looking at for one of these open houses? Like, what's the timeframe, like the duration of the event, I guess?
It's certainly flexible.
Like, what's quoted, I guess I should say.
Oh, let me quote it.
You've got 23 man-hours, so you're not gonna be sitting here for 23 hours with one person, so.
Right, so that, that includes prep time, creating all the materials, travel time. And then generally, we bring two staff members to the open house. Generally, we target three to four hours runtime. We try to kind of straddle when people are getting in and out of work. So like, three to seven is generally a really good time, because you're, you're getting people who might be getting out of first shift after school. Or, and then it also gives parents an opportunity to get home, get the kids fed, and then maybe bring the kids to the open house afterwards, after they've come back from school, after they've had dinner. Our activities that we do at an open house are designed to be done by any age group and of any ability, so they're, you know, really universally accessible as well. And then we can even design specific engagement opportunities for children, that are generally a little bit more tailored to that age group. But we've had success in all ages participating in our open houses.
You brought up accessibility, low or no vision, hard of hearing. You have accessibility options for, for those residents?
Yeah, certainly. So we place a huge emphasis on universal kind of accessibility and readability in graphic design as well. We actually have a graphics specialist on staff who's really mindful about all of that. So for people who have visual impairments, we use high-contrast colors, try to avoid a lot of similar colors, especially paying attention to colorblindness or color confusion. And then we always have staff members there to, to help people who may not be able to physically or participate in those activities, and the staff members can engage those people.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions, if there's time for?
If any of the questions do come up, you know, if you're driving home and you're like, oh man, I wish I would've asked him that. Steve has my contact information, feel free to reach out, email, phone call, I'm happy to answer any of other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next contestant is Jeff from McKenna, and I'll let him go through his proposal.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Keesler from McKenna, and I'm in our Grand Rapids office. We have three offices, one in Northville, one in Kalamazoo, and one in Grand Rapids. We are in our Grand Rapids office, we do a lot of work in West Michigan, of course. And so right now, we're working in Luddington, doing an update of their zoning ordinance. We're working in Hart, to kind of help them with a couple of smaller zoning issues. One thing they wanna do is be able to zone for food trucks in the town, to bring some activity in the summertime, and also have other dining options for people to have that are not, you know, normal brick-and-mortar businesses. But, so we're doing some things like that with them. We just, we did a, finishing a master plan update with Montague. And that's been really, really a great process. And Meskeen Township, Hartson Rav, plan, we just wrapped up with them, and they, they just submitted that too. So a lot of work in this area, we're pretty familiar with the area. And as Steve said, as Rowan said, I'm not gonna go into it too much, but, but absolutely, a good master plan is going to inform a good zoning ordinance. And we've certainly seen examples of towns that, you know, it's like the master plan and the zoning ordinance, they don't line up, and it's no good for anybody. So it creates a lot of situations in your town where you have what's called non-conformities. So a building that isn't supposed to be built this way, or looked this way, or whatever, it exists, and it sort of detracts from the rest of the town, if you will. So, yeah, that's, it's fantastic that you guys are doing this this way. The, the master plan is kind of that high-level vision for your community. Here is where we are today, and here is where we'd like to go tomorrow, and here's where we don't wanna go, by the way. And then the zoning ordinance is going to help inform that process and really put it out on the ground the way that the master plan has kind of set it up. So great, great that you're doing this this way. What we're kind of looking at is a similar, like an 18-month process, first with the master plan update, and then, and then kind of rolling that into the zoning ordinance update. We are looking at a kickoff meeting with the planning commission, and then a survey, online survey. And we, we are definitely willing to do some open houses, or like Montague did, instead of doing community open houses, they did, we did four stakeholder meetings. So we met with the DEA, city staff, which was, we learned a lot, and planning commission, and the city council. At the city council, that was sort of opened up to the public, you know, anybody could, could come. And we had, we had more individuals from the public from that meeting. But that was sort of effective for them. They're a smaller town, they didn't necessarily feel that they needed to do a bunch of community open houses, and they wanted the people to sort of do the stuff on the ground to be able to do the focus groups. So we did that with them. And then, as the plan is sort of wrapping up, there will be three draft review meetings, and then the adoption process. And then moving into the zoning ordinance, um, also draft review meetings, we're we're kind of doing that with Luddington right now. Um, and those are great, uh, really helps you look at like, you know, you're looking at this parcel and, you know, does it fit into the neighborhood? And can we, you know, make this use happen that this person's trying to do? Um, so those are, those are pretty intense, but uh, but also very helpful. And then, of course, the uh, the zoning adoption process, um, the zoning adoption process meetings. There's a couple of those as well. So um, that's what we are looking at and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, I was curious as to what the public participation in a community outreach actually is.
So it would be, I mean, absolutely a survey. And then it's kind of like up to you guys to decide if you want want to do open houses or the the stakeholder focus groups.
You itemized that at a five thousand dollar fee. Is that going to include a public uh, open house?
That's correct, yep. So the open houses are, you know, instead of um, including those in the lump fee, that's optional.
Right.
Um, but yeah, the open houses are three thousand and the stakeholder meetings are two.
So that isn't in the itemized five thousand dollars?
If you want to do both, yes. Yeah, if you want to do both, both like the old, the community open house and the stakeholder groups. And a lot of people do one or the other, not not necessarily both, but you can do both.
I think what Wayne's getting after is task number three is public participation. That's a separate five thousand dollars.
Separate, but at the, at the bottom, you list as optional.
Right.
Public open house three, and then your workshop two, which totals five thousand dollars.
Sure.
So I was trying to determine is the public participation, community outreach, is that five thousand dollars, these two tasks combined?
It is, the one, the one open house meeting and the, yep.
And if we want the additional, that's.
If we want additional, that's, that's what, that's what we were having a discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so that, so just to be clear, that item three would include one?
One each.
One, one each, yeah, and the survey as well, yeah.
And the, and the online survey as well.
If we opted for paper, um, to get, you know, like, um, I completely forgot.
Right.
Right, um, to get them here on hand, that's all part and parcel?
Absolutely, we would, we would be doing that anyway to to reach individuals that.
As many people as possible.
Yeah, they're not online or for whatever reason.
So what, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm probably thinking we're gonna wanna add one open house.
Absolutely. I mean, I I think again, the idea being that we want to um, we want to have scheduling such that we're able to catch people on different shifts.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, it would be nice if everyone worked nine to five sort of thing, but that isn't realistic.
Sure.
And the, the idea being to get uh, as much uh, public input as we can. Um, you know, timing, this is an agricultural community and, you know, if we're looking, if we're talking about timeline, we're probably looking at um, these open houses being during the growing season, I would think, for crops. Somewhere late spring, mid-spring to mid-summer. Um, so again, folks in the agricultural industry are working longer hours during that period of time. You know, it's right now, they're, they may be laid off, they may uh, or have shortened hours, but uh, at that time of year, they're, they're planting or whatever.
Sure.
Um, we want to find some way to make sure and accommodate, you know, it's a a big part of our in- industry base.
Have you did any of the rural areas? I mean, like, Montague is more of a city, same way with Muskegon Township. I mean, it's, it's still a township, but it's a lot more densely packed, not like our rural area here.
Sure, um, we, we have work right now, we're doing um, uh, we're doing a master plan update for Berry County. Um, so, um, yeah, we're, we're very familiar with that. We, we're doing some work also in Alpine Township, um, which is like right north of Grand Rapids. And they, they have a lot of uh, pressure, um, they want to remain rural and agricultural, but Grand Rapids is raw, every day trying to.
Getting cramped, yes.
Yes.
Because I look, looking through your packet that you provided us, I see you've got Bengal Township in Clinton County, Leroy Township in Ingle County, those are very, very, very rural and agricultural.
Yep.
Um, it's like a look corn, a look at house, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I guess the, and then I also see Grand Haven Charter Township. Um, so with the um, a lot of recreation in Grand Haven Charter Township and the surrounding area.
Exactly.
And we've got lakes that I can't, I don't have enough fingers and toes to count all the lakes and waterways and access points that we have here, and we'd like to definitely capitalize on all that. So.
Sure.
It's nice seeing that you've worked with, you know, middle of nowhere and.
Yeah.
And densely populated.
Yeah.
And touristy, yeah, touristy too.
It's just like Berry County, same thing. I mean, they, they, they want to remain rural, their value is their natural resources, Yankee Springs and uh, you know, things like that. So they, but they want to be able to capitalize on that because that's paying their bills for them, you know? And that, that, that is actually going to help them remain the way that they want to remain into the future because, you know, they're able to have their tax, uh, tax revenue coming in from basically outside. I mean, people are coming in to visit and they're dropping off their dollars and then going back home, but the dollars stay there. So um, yeah, I mean, we're, we're very familiar with with helping shape that kind of, that kind of uh, community for sure.
Um, both for Rowan and for Jeff, I do want to add, what we're looking at today to to deal with is basically the master plan itself. Um, we're not gonna even get into the, the zoning ordinance, um, because as we said, we don't, you know, and haven't really thought about this. Um, it started out as a zoning ordinance issue and then realized that that's put in the cart for a horse. So um, what we will be dealing with today is just the master plan and not the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So are we able to separate them then?
Yeah, that's why, that's why you guys, I see you guys separated them here, so we can kind of look at it that direction.
We certainly can.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, I know some will roll over between the two, information from one toward the other then.
Sure.
I would imagine we're gonna follow relatively closely, aren't we?
Who knows, if the world doesn't blow up, yeah.
First and foremost, we have.
Right, I realize, right, we're, we're concentrating, and that's the way it's laid out.
Yeah.
Master plan first.
Yeah.
But I would, I, I would assume that work is going to progress towards the zoning at the, at the same process.
Yeah, it's funny, I don't want to speak for Jeff, but I think we would probably both encourage you to hire the same consultant for the master plan and zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it really does, it really makes it.
Because then you guys have, whoever it is has the background already, has already has.
The two of them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Of course, that assumes we still like here.
True.
Any other questions?
Other than, I'd like to see updated uh, finances then, on hard copy of what we're gonna be looking at.
It is?
Well, I just scribbled in some extra numbers for.
Like adding another open house or?
Adding open houses and stuff.
We have, well, that's just to get an idea.
Yeah, I don't want to say, hey, I stuck under this, I mean, this isn't a legal binding.
Yeah, well, just to get us an idea of what it would run, so if we decide that's the version, you know, we've got kind of that.
You guys now have a pretty good understanding of what the brass tacks are gonna be on, what we really like to see. Because of our world establishment and such, I would like to be able to get as much info as we can possibly receive. I don't want to come up with and say that we, we five can plan what's gonna happen for the township from here on out. That's what I'm like.
Okay, and let's, let's get to that. Um, in that case, uh, Jeff, I'm thinking that if we look at the master plan total um, of twenty-three plus an extra public open house, another three, so we're looking at a total of twenty-six thousand?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, for the master plan, um, McKenna, and I'll, well, um. And then if I'm looking at, um.
This is important, yeah.
For one, if you might, that'll be.
It would likely be another twelve hundred dollars for another additional house.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I don't have that much left, so.
You know, we're gonna.
All we got is a bottom line number.
I'm working on it. Bringing the master plan total to roughly twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah. At least I didn't come up with a million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Stay satisfied at this point, and I'm sure as, as time goes on, discussions go on while we make our choice, I'm sure we'll have more. But for the moment, unless anyone else does.
No, I have other questions.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time then, we can get some zoning administrators comments?
Oh, boy. Okay.
Who is that next?
Alrighty, um, I'm gonna hand out to charge one is our monthly zoning report. And as we're always a month behind, this is really in, in December, like last year. Everybody got that? And then I always, every year, I do a summary of what's going on uh, every year. And just following around. We wound up the year with um, thirty-one zoning permits, which isn't the record, but it's pretty close. I think the most we've ever had was thirty-three previous year. Um, what's really significant, I wanna, uh, I'm gonna leave that uh, right now. I want to go to the summary because I think that's more critical. Um, what's really impressive is if we look at new construction, we had eight new homes go into Township last year um, at a total of one point six million dollars worth of, with the building. Um, that's pretty impressive to, to kind of compare the prior year, twenty-twenty-one, we had five homes go in for nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, just under a million. So our average home building cost is just about the same, we just had more homes being built last year. I think, um, I started with some folks earlier, I think we probably had the highest number of new homes in the county last year. Um, other townships like Town Water, Claybanks, Golden, they probably have a larger dollar amount because you have the Lake Michigan stuff that's coming in at two, three million dollars. But in terms of numbers, I think we're number one in the county, and I think that's something pretty pleased about. We'll also note that we have one point one five million dollars worth of commercial buildings uh, committed to township. And those were as part of our growth facilities. Um, and again, comparing that to the previous year, that was uh, one point two million. So we were just a little, little short what we had here previously. Um, it's just, just overall, we've seen, seen pretty good growth in terms of development in the, in the township.
Mm-hmm.
Um, people like living here and uh, continue to see good growth that way. We certainly still have some light issues and stuff to deal with and eventually we'll have the big boom and nothing on. Uh, the, the joke is that, I think most of the folks here understand the joke, except uh, Jeff, for Jeff and Rowan's benefit, Tuesday night, there was a report, and we very love to ask some of the folks in the room actually heard this. And no one knows what the heck it was, um, so. Yeah, we, we kind of think we know about where it was. I was thinking the meth lab over there on Woodrow, but uh, um.
Fire department wasn't engaged in that one.
Yeah, yeah, um, um, although I did see the fire, I was actually here Tuesday night. And I did, when I came here around eight o'clock, I did see them head out to the fire burn. Um, anyways, uh, no, I, I think it's all pretty good news. Um, we've had good job growth, we've had uh, our, you know, the money we've invested in roads is, I think, helping. Also, as people come and they see that we're improving the road system, it's become a very attractive township for folks. And uh, I think the numbers bear that out. Any questions?
Not at this point.
Okay. See, I kept it short, right?
For a change.
Any other planning commission board discussion, can you, or have? Anybody got something like to add to tonight's meeting or something?
Oh, I will add, I'm sorry, Wayne, I will add one thing. We may wind up with a special meeting. Uh, we do have a commercial operator who is thinking of adding a new building to their site plan, which would require a slight site plan review by the planning commission.
Yes.
For approval, so um, I will update folks, uh, right now, that's still up in the air. It's nothing for sure. If that happens, I will be sending an email out to everyone, um, to let them know, kind of coordinate a date on that. Um, if they do decide to go forward, I know they would probably want that at our April meeting.
All right, what we could hear from you on that then? Public comments, this time I want to go ahead and open it up to the public for any comments that they may have on tonight's agenda. All right, recommendations for the board for tonight? Guess we're gonna have to recommend the board, uh, at least let them know what the election results were.
Mm-hmm.
We have the rec, the uh, results of the chairperson being nominated is Michael Janzma. With our guest. Mary to fill in and in.
You still don't remember my name, Wayne? I must see it every time, I'll, I'll wear a name tag next time.
It's old days, one moment I have it and the next I don't. What's her name, fill in, that always works. And then uh, Mary Martin.
Close now.
I can remember that one, as secretary, again. We'll report them to the board at the next board meeting. And I guess with that, there's no public comments.
Are we, are we gonna make a recommendation on the uh?
I didn't know where to go on that yet, if we're gonna do that, I'd have. I mean, we got, we got the information, I guess they did give us a nail down, so then I don't know if we wish to, to call for a. How do we go about if there's going to be a, a motion on that?
Yeah, you do exactly that way, just like any other recommendation.
Is it something we absolutely, positively have to do at this meeting, or do we have time to mull it over? And can we call another meeting at another point for the purposes of that, or?
We don't, we don't have a meeting until April.
Okay.
So, if you're looking at a.
Start a day from there.
You know, an eighteen month, even let's say a twelve month process for the.
But is it possible that we can mull this over, get more information if we so desire, and call a special meeting for the purposes just of that?
I was just going to say, the one thing that would help is if, that if the one entity decided to do a special meeting, we could add that to the agenda at that time too. I'm just thinking timeline.
Right.
We have to do this before we can do the zoning.
Right.
And I know folks are concerned about.
Well, there was, just at the presentation, and they both had good pros and cons.
I was thinking that we read through them a little.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think it's a little, little quick to go ahead and say, I'm going to pick one right now.
As long as you guys could have your special meeting before our February Township meeting, that way you can.
I'm open.
Give us a recommendation so we can make a decision on our Tuesday, or our February meeting. But that, so that would give you guys a couple of weeks to.
Just looking at the calendar, the second Thursday of February is the ninth. Want to set, do we want to do that, set one for the ninth, for the purposes of making that recommendation to the board before the meeting?
Mike, I think that's a, that's a good idea because again, if this person decides to go forward with their plans, we could, that would give them plenty of time as well.
Okay.
It's not a bad idea.
And that was?
February ninth, Thursday, second Thursday.
That was your.
No, I was, what I was asking, so when's, when's the February meeting for the Township, what day?
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday is the twenty-first.
Okay, why can't we do it right before that? Or you guys want to have a little bit of time too? Whatever our recommendation is to you to.
We'll, we'll pass. Three of us already have the information out, I don't want to jump in there.
Okay. So, you guys have.
We have what you.
You, you guys have a way after you look at.
So, yeah, everybody's got it, Steve sent it to everybody.
Okay, alright, that's what I was asking. I'm good with that.
I'm good with your, with your, with your date, February.
February ninth.
February ninth.
So, you may want to do a vote on that, Wayne, and then put that into recommendations for the board?
I want to make a motion, I want to make a motion that we have a special meeting to choose a proposal to present to the board at the next meeting, and that date being February ninth.
To get that.
For us to get.
To recommend the company. Correct, to recommend a company in February ninth.
Yes.
Somebody we have, okay.
Yes.
And then Steve, if this special meeting that we're calling would be able, for the, for that commercial operator you spoke of, would, and would we add that then?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we'll, we'll know more.
Okay, if it doesn't come, it doesn't come.
Exactly, that's, that's my thought, is that it would, you know, if we know we need a special meeting anyways.
Right.
My thought is to, to combine the two.
Efficiently.
Yeah, yeah, so not a, we're not getting into the meeting every month.
Yeah.
Sort of situation.
We can do posters.
We'll have to do it, yeah.
We'll have to do posters.
Okay.
I can give you on that.
Okay.
Motion on the floor.
So, Wayne made the motion, I didn't hear it, I seconded it, rep seconded.
All in favor, indicate by eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed, same. Pass five to zero. This time, can we get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn by Mary, pardon, support. Which one? Support by Michael Janzma. All in favor?
Eye.
Opposed.